Follow the holiday city council meeting on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three to order at seven P M. Wes, please call the roll.
Council President Isom.
Here.
Councilor Acosta.
Here.
Councilor Lawrence.
Here.
Councilor Florida.
Here.
Councilor Roman.
Here.
Councilor Strauss.
Here.
Please register for the meeting.
To the flag, the United States of America. And to the people who stand, one nation.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank each of you took time to attend tonight.
Yeah.
And any guests who are present need to fill out a meeting sign in sheet near the door. We're running a hybrid meeting again to continue to allow those who wanted to attend or want to do so. Cut down on background noise and feedback. Your attendees should meet themselves while not speaking. Staff members and guests on the next agenda will need to unmeet themselves to give reports to council. Audience members may unmute themselves to speak during public hearing and citizen comments. Didn't we have? People show up?
To get, oh yeah.
Let it get on that. Okay. There they are. So first item in the agenda is council minutes for the past month. Are the questions, comments, amendments, et cetera?
I have two amendments. Where it said that, um, and they're not that big of a deal that, um. It said councillor Isom asked the staff about good customer service. Knows of a business who had a phone system down for a month. I don't know who said that. But it wasn't me. I remember somebody talked about it.
We were talking about the new phone system.
Yeah, but I don't know. I don't have, I don't know if it's.
About. Business being down for a month on their phone systems for me.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I. Councilor Lawrence and said that. And then another one from me is, um, on the school district minutes. Um, the last line staggered start and one less day a week is because they did not have a best stuff drivers. I did not say that either because that's not true. They have been only a four day school week for. Fifteen years. Fifteen sixteen years. So the one less day a week is nothing. Does not matter what's going on right now. So that's all.
Okay, there's just an hour delay or something like that you were saying?
Yeah, it's just the one, the stagger times, the elementary starts.
Yeah.
They go get the school and then come back. So. Anyway, so that's all.
Those are amended. What? Will they be amended?
Yes.
Yeah.
So then there's no. Need promotion until it's amended.
Yeah.
And was from back in that font and and he.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's okay. So the next item on the agenda is financial reports. And these will be presented in January council meeting. A cell issue or something.
Yeah.
So the next. What's that?
Money still.
Okay. Our next item is the W inches. At the sheriff's office here.
So before, I guess it's November already, or was it? Now December. Uh, Brandon found might have met some of you. I'm the captain, uh, for the sheriff's office for patrol. Um, so you probably usually see Steve, Brian, or sometimes Michelle. So. So for traffic citations for November, there was six traffic warnings, eleven, you had prices on the front there. There is back is at two arrests and thirty-nine complaints. A total of seventy-nine hours. The problem for the month of November. Uh, there was a couple of things, just, I mean, you guys. Look pretty good for November, but of note was the trailer that was stolen.
Yeah.
On G Street and then the Holy Post Office had a break in, uh, up there. To. Some of that. Information out there that leading us to. A suspect in that case. And then probably the, I guess, the latest news was, and even though it's not. You guys have questions as far as, uh, the bomb threats that were going on yesterday, I'm happy to. Try to address any of that with you. There was several throughout the state, um, and in other states that came from the country. That's very basic, but if you want to, um, pump up or anything.
Wow, that's deco this easy.
Yeah.
There's a lot of traffic stops.
Yeah.
Good. Um, you'll be, and. One thing I will touch on, something like that. So you'll see a lot of those warnings like for equipment violation and Steve started maybe may have described some of this, but. A lot of times it's people fishing. So you'll see some of those warnings, uh, which is kind of how they got some of. Into that one arrest ended up being an uncooperative. Um, resisted arrest. And so. Just using some of that traffic skills and actually is very good for cities proactive. And I could step by like when I look at the report, so.
Any questions? Comments?
No.
I've appreciated seeing you guys out at the, um, schools and stuff in the morning. I've noticed the last month or so, you guys have been out here pretty. Frequently during morning drop off and stuff, so it's definitely been noticed.
Uh, long term goal ones for staff, we had to have an assertive.
Thank you very much.
Or can we stick around or?
Yeah.
Whatever you want to do.
Do you need to sit down for a minute?
I imagine you've got lots of work to do.
Appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other delegations, Wes? Okay, next item on the agenda is citizen comments. Time for interested citizens and anyone in the audience to address the council on any item of concern. Please leave me your comments to about three minutes and by start by introducing yourself and stating your address. Nobody? Okay, well, then moving on. Report to the council. Uh, first up, we'll go the city administrator's report.
Okay. So. The mayor and council president Isom, I went to the school board meeting and. I won't report on everything that happened there, but, um, I just introduced myself, um, and talked about some ways that we can work together in the city and the school district. And, um. The mayor talked about, and I both talked about if I were a mayor per day and how would you like to reintegrate that. I know that's something. Uh, a program that's having going, but by the time I had gotten here, that was too late for the dead. Um, that's a program that goes through the elementary, the middle school and the high school. And and lets children tell us what they would do with the city for a day. Um, and then, uh, I, uh. Really tried to promote our librarian. Um, she's very professional. Uh, I think she could be, uh, a very good asset for, um. The children's ability to read throughout the summer. Um. And, uh, so I really promoted how Abby can help the school district. And, um, understanding our library isn't quite as big as the elementary school library. Or I haven't seen the other library, but I assume it's a lot smaller. But yeah, it's what will be available a lot more during the summer. And so. And I had a meeting again with Abby today about how we could approach, um. Maybe she can go and do some presentations at the school and and do some promoting at the school and then, um. Maybe stretching a hour, expanding some hours to have school pill hips across the street to the, to the library some. The children can get familiar with it and get their parents to bring it on the phone. I just briefly talked about how, uh, we have access to, um. You know, state representatives and. Occasionally the governor, um, how we would, uh, like to, we have the ability to invite students to come to those meetings if they would like. And try to integrate them and the superintendent said that she would get the, um, civics teacher in touch with you. So. I'll forward that with her shortly. Any questions about that? And then, uh, we received the, uh, the first draft of our council goals. And so, uh, Mr. Kenny was here with me yesterday and, um, we were going over, um. The council goals to make sure that they were accurate to what, um. Uh, what, what you, um, had voted on and then, uh, how we want to implement it and, um. What, you know, some of the things, um. Were already pretty deep into, and so we talked about what was done. And so he's gonna, he's taking notes and then he's gonna keep. Present you a final copy of the January, uh, council meeting. And he'll be here to present that for you. Any questions on that one? Um, and then we, um, I don't have a lot to say about this, um, because most of it is, is. Going on in executive session, but we are currently, uh, in contact with all the candidates and, um. So that's in practice. And then, um, we, the mayor and I had a meeting with, uh, uh. The mayor and Andy and I had a meeting with Representative Jamie Kate. And, um. He was giving us some updates on the bills that she's working on and then the, uh, there. Some of the governor's top priorities, uh, he also gave us instructions on how to get, uh, project funded. Um, he gave us a price, a price range and what, what project. Uh, generally get approved and what Phil, uh, campaigned for, I guess. Um, and she was saying right, right around the one point nine million dollar mark, she's already projects. And so. The man I had a, a brief discussion on what project we could get covered quickly and what we can present. Um, she said that there could be something approved in the short section that's coming up, uh. Uh, we didn't get something in firm. I don't know if we get approved, but she said that actually doesn't matter. She said, uh, uh, sometimes. Um, the more he can turn something forward, uh, they, they actually tend to approve things that have been on the docket. Yeah, I definitely felt like he was a very invested representative. She, I, you know, I really enjoyed the time with her. Thought it was a very productive meeting and, um. Yeah.
That meeting originated with an email. And we got with the, ask if we had any. Financial ask. Um, which it's. I've. Not really unheard of, but rare, usually the ask is to the representative and very rarely do those representatives come out. For. An ask, so. Understanding that process was good and getting to the point where. We may not get it out of the box, especially on a short session, but if we keep, present it again in a long session and after that.
What are those applicable to?
It's, and this particular ask was for any, um, construction type of day. Ask, um, generally infrastructure.
Okay.
So, uh. My thought was trying to. See if we could wrangle in a new vector truck. Cause as you work all of the building projects. And she said that. May work, most likely will not, but. Nothing better, nothing gain, but not lead with the vector truck, but have an actual project. That we need to do, so.
What about the library?
Well, that. With Eric.
Okay.
Our com, it's still really, really early in that, but I think that.
Would that be one to get on the docket?
I think it probably would, but most likely for long session. Um, find out what the needs of that building are. And then legally that, so.
One, one, one quick update on that too. Eric confirmed us that he had re-roofed it and they say did the electric.
Did the electrical.
So. He just got that out of the way right away.
Yeah, that'd be one to look at also. I didn't mean to hijack you there.
And and she was very responsive. She immediately sent a thank you letter, um, and. Uh, thanking us, but it was important for help to us and actually, uh, she, she was very thankful. We knew some of the legislation that was coming up that she didn't. The mayor was, was very informative for her, so.
Uh, next is Andy with Public Works. Are you there, Andy?
You know.
You there, Andy?
Hi, um, should I go? Sorry, I couldn't hear anything for a second. Um, I still can't hear anything. Okay, okay, I'm just gonna go. Uh, so November was a little bit of a slow month for us at the library. We were closed for five days that we would usually be open. So we were only open for seventeen days of the month. But we had a total of sixty-eight visitors with an average of four per day. And we had forty-three items checked out and fifteen renewed, and we issued three new library cards to new patrons. That number has been. Kind of steadily going. We've been getting new patrons each month, which I'm happy about. Um, we added ten new books to the collection in November. We are still doing the food drive. And we're still letting people pick a book to take home. If they bring in something to donate, um, by the end of this month, I'll have that food. Over to sharing hands. I submitted the application for the. Accessibility in libraries grant that we were hoping to use for a new door. It'll probably be a few months before I hear anything back on that. But I've been. In contact with a couple of different companies who could potentially do that for us. So far I've gotten one quote. And I'm waiting to hear back from a couple of other people so we can get at least two more. But. For that company, it was, I think. Left Coast Stores. They quoted us about ten thousand dollars. Which would be perfect if we get the grant. And. Let's see, we just did the holiday light parade. I think that went really well. Hopefully got some people excited about the library, um. I'm putting together a story time for December twenty-second. And that's going to be kind of holiday themed. We'll do crafts and a story and. Have snacks or hot cocoa or something, um. And. Yeah, other than that, um. I was finally able to get a mem- a membership for the American Library Association. Which comes with a membership to the Oregon Library Association. So I think that'll be very helpful for us. They can connect us with a lot of different. Grants and assistance and they provide a lot of. Support. In grant proposals, so. I think that'll be really good for us. Um, a lot of grants are only available for members. So I think. It's. Definitely, definitely helpful. Um, the grant writing course that I'm going to take starts tomorrow. So I'm excited for that. And let's see. Um, with the. Course starting, I'm going to be working a couple more hours a week. So. Yeah, I think that's everything I had. Does anybody have any questions?
One of the, the grants that she's gonna be looking at is a grant for rural, um. Housing and. Construction projects and helping small communities have the funds to do infrastructure construction and things like that, so. Hope you'll.
Yeah.
Have a. A chance at that as well. And that's, uh, USDA if I recall.
Yes, USDA, I'm looking into that one. There's also. One other small one that I'm looking into that's. Um. Basically designated funds for outreach and events. So fingers crossed for that one, too.
Any questions, comments? Well, thank you very much, Abby.
Thank you, Abby.
We try Andy again.
Neither into the.
Not even in the room?
Okay.
She, you accept him into the meeting?
I did. I accepted everybody that's, that's come into it.
Okay. Okay. Call and put him on speakerphone.
Yeah.
Well.
Only has to do it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
We'll move on to sharing hands with Councilor Remsens.
Could it be?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
That's you.
Let me just.
Well. Um, I haven't really been dealing with the food bank side as much lately because as much of you know, I've been working on the building.
Mm-hmm.
And it's only a seven day a week project, so I got plenty of free time. Uh, come along pretty good. We've got all the exterior walls are up.
Connect.
Um, the last of the concrete gets poured tomorrow. Trust is being set on the plates tomorrow. So we'll start working on the roof Thursday. So.
Oh. Were you able to get the, uh, high schoolers out there to help?
No, because it's timing and you've had to shift things around along the way. Weather affects us greatly.
Yeah.
And, and we had one day that, uh, was supposed to rain that didn't until late in the day. I had enough volunteers show up that we actually got. Worked on, I had planned for two days later, so. Which put us a little bit ahead, which was great. Uh, the goal is still to try to get an enclosed building by the end of the year. Could be close.
Yeah.
But we've got all our subs lined out. You talk to the first of the year, subs will start working in there. Um, still. We're about halfway, a little over halfway on the funding. And so we're still, for donations on that end, but. It's been far people donating the time, uh, since we started building malls. Uh, I've had a lot of people to manage.
Obviously.
Yeah, we have steadily had. Uh, four to eight volunteers there almost every day. Since I started the malls. He's sweet. Um, I, it's great getting it up. We've got, gotten a lot of, uh. Recognition in the community, people realizing something's happening and they come. Check it out. What's really exciting is check out our Facebook page. Cause the pictures change regularly and we've had people just show up. Because they saw it on Facebook. I've got one guy that saw it on Facebook and he's been there almost every day working.
Did the building trades department of the school come out and help you guys or?
No, I haven't, uh, been able to connect it because they need a little lead time. And that's just.
Right.
Really tough to do.
Well. You may have. Send an addendum of some type for him. Any questions, comments for Councilor Remsens, they warn? No? So. Have you thought about not doing seven days a week?
Yeah.
I had a long conversation with your wife.
Only get a couple more weeks like this and then it's, um, so.
I called your phone one day last week and you left it at home. So Jenny and I had quite the long conversation. And, um, yeah.
I'll finally get more done with it.
Well, that may be.
You know, there are calls when I'm on a roof or I'm hanging upside down in a place, that's when the phone.
So you left your phone at home. But yes.
Incidentally.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
She told me you've been working way too much.
Not the only ones that say that.
Yeah, she would like to see.
Yeah, she gets to see me sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I appreciate all your hard work for them. Wes. So next item on the agenda is the Central and School District with Council President Isom.
Well, it was nice to have Wes and Mayor there. To introduce and I heard that Candace told me to tell you guys thank you for coming. So. Um, it's always nice to hear from somebody else rather than me just going la, 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 la. So that was nice. Um, the biggest thing that, uh, got talked about is, um, they're. Starting, very prelim, starting the process of, um. Uh, putting together a bond again. To present to. It'll be a couple of years out because they're doing, going about it a much different way than what they have in the past. Um, they've got committees, they've got a, uh. A group, when, yeah, contractor, Wen- Wenaha.
Wenaha.
Wenaha group and, um. They're really gonna. Be asking, you know, staff and community members, they're putting together some, uh, different committees and stuff too. Trying to get opinions on what needed and everything, so. But that's really, that took up quite a bit of the meeting, so. That's it.
Questions? And you guys are easy tonight.
I know.
So the next item on the agenda is the Oregon Cat Gate West Council of Governments.
And I have no. I, uh. I've talked to those guys or been engaged in that in quite a while from. Either being gone, not being able to get into my detail or. Not having extra time to go to those, so. Apologies for that.
Okay.
So then the next item is any new business, which there's. Done. The old business?
Yeah. Well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Acted officially tonight is my last.
Whatever. Positive.
Well, it's this time.
Don't we have to vote on that?
Yeah. You don't get to vote.
Yeah.
My comp is starting to come back, which is an annual thing for me.
Yeah.
Another month, it'll be a challenge if I don't get out of this weather.
Now, can I have your chair when you leave?
Uh, hate to tell you this. Too.
We just moved in it. Sorry.
You know, I know I tried to get you to change your mind, but. You know, medical issues are are important, family is important and. I want to make sure you understand how much you have meant to the city of all the, all these years. And. It is. I I I have no words without.
Yeah, it all started out and asked to move a door.
How many years ago?
Two thousand eleven.
Yeah.
But a few years.
Are noted aboard and not aware, if you are unaware. This building is his fault. This building would not have happened without that man right down there.
It was the joke of the town.
Yep.
He moved the building.
Yeah.
They moved the building. You're just sad.
Yeah.
It uh.
That was the laughing stock of the town. Everybody drive it through looking at it. For so long.
And then being able to. City Hall to here, we ran to free up what was originally the library.
Right.
Became city city hall and it's now the library again. We were able to do the work on there, again with volunteers.
So. You planning on staying on committee?
Um yeah.
And on budget, but budget and um.
But you look at it like old like, you have an active meeting next week, I know that.
Yeah. Planning commission.
Planning commission.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've been on that for quite a while too.
Having a hard time looking at you, Ken.
No, I've enjoyed it. I've I've been through, well, if I count Wes, I've been through, I think, five administrators right now.
I know, we we miss you on this hiring stuff right now, cause you've always got. Great insight and questions.
So I knew that I was leaving.
I know.
So. And kind of overwhelmed with all that I'm trying to get done.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, I had a long conversation with your wife and. I said that too. Now, I appreciate you thinking of that and not just doing it just because, but. Yeah.
And you'll see me harass you.
You you've met. A lot to me, Ken. When I became mayor, you were. I need to get back. Very encouraging. Kind and occasional. Bad upside the head. Yeah.
It wasn't too awkward.
You've been a a a major source of knowledge and help and I I greatly appreciate that.
Well, it's been a pleasure to serve. It's been a pleasure to serve with the group that's here now. I love seeing some younger people in here.
Yep. I think that means I'm gonna be the oldest person in the room. So um I wanted to have something here for you. But unfortunately that it's gonna be delayed, but so you will have to make another appearance.
Well, you see me at the Christmas dinner. Let's ask for any.
Yeah.
I assume everybody's coming.
Yes.
Seems so.
Yep. Anything else, anybody? No ordinances, no resolutions?
I know, it's weird.
This is kind of.
Merry Christmas.
But we do have new guests and I'd be intrigued finding who these people are. If you'd be so willing to. Let us know who you are.
This uh Carl Town, my daughter's a serial killer. We live on six eighty-five West East Street.
Awesome.
Dead end street there.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you. It's so rare that we get people to come, so. I get excited when people show up.
So yes, so don't mind us all like.
There are people here.
We love it.
Who is on behind the scenes of the new episode of Town, what makes town taste.
Awesome.
What brought a dog.
Awesome.
We totally appreciate that, thank you.
And how old are you? Eggs, nice. Do you have any questions for us? No? Okay.
You're more than welcome to come back anytime.
Absolutely. Well, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn at thirty-seven.